Welcome to our council chambers. The floor is yours.
Um, okay. All right, so I wouldn't be trying to jump ahead here, but I have a weight to go to, so I'd like to do this. So I'm here for the mayor's departmental budget.
I thought you were here for engineering.
Okay. Well, I mean, you know, because I'll be here, obviously, much more in the next coming weeks to have, you know, answer any questions to the full budget, but today will be within the mayor's budget. So, um, pretty straightforward. You know, before I begin, I just would like to note that the salary lines currently at $300,732. That is 85,000 more than the FY '24 actuals and 62,000 more, 63,000 if you round up, than the 2023 actuals. That increase in this department accounts for the fact that in those years, there was no chief of staff. I believe in 2023, there was a chief of staff for a partial amount of time. In FY '24, there was no chief of staff, and the increase in that budget line to today is less than, you know, the loaded salary. So that's, I just wanted to state that before we begin. That's why that discrepancy from '23 and '24 is there. And that, in my opinion, is a vacancy that had to be filled. So that is the, that's the major discrepancy there. So your, any other questions, I guess we'll open them up. Pretty straightforward, no real changes, so, any questions?
With the travel, I know you said you, last year you were doing some conferences and stuff. Do you have anything lined up on that docket this year that you have in mind?
Yes, last year, we did not go to other NICOM conferences and do some, in particular Albany trips that we would have done due to a lot of the involvement we had with the officer involved shooting. So we spent a lot more time, other than going to NICOM in the spring. We did a lot of work here in Utica. So, yes, there would be more travel involved. So that, you know, budget, I wanted to retain mainly because this year is going to have a lot more advocacy work in Albany as well, because we are moving forward, you know, with other initiatives, with AIM, with the potential of the bed tax, et cetera. So that will, I'd like to see that remain intact, but we'll see what happens.
So I just, I want to make sure I'm reading this right. The travel part of it, you, '24 or '25, you requested 5,000. You used 1,062, is that correct?
So, no, I was not, the actuals from fiscal year '24, I think some of that came, you know, out of that budget line. This year, though, like NICOM, for example, that year-to-date actual does not include the travel we did for this year already. And we were in Albany twice, for example. That's not updated. So the actuals for '25 does not include the fact that we attended NICOM already in February, and we were in Albany, I'm trying to remember, for the state of the state, although that, I didn't stay over for that, but...
Where is, on here, the part that shows that you are not using a company vehicle? You're using, that would be in a different part of the budget?
So that was always washed into the overall budget, so it just kind of went unnoticed. When I became mayor, I didn't take a vehicle. What we tried to do last year was estimate, well, we did. We estimated that that vehicle cost between $700 and $800 a month, between the lease of the police interceptor, and gas and maintenance, because everything was included with that, everything. The mayor's office did not even pay for gas for that vehicle. So initially, we attempted to do, not like a stipend, but we tried to figure out, okay, what would that be equivalent to, so we could figure out if it's, you know, used for purposes of the office, could there be like, like a $300 a month, I don't want to use the word stipend, but assessment towards quote "vehicle use." That way, outside of quote "work hours," I was in my own vehicle, using my own insurance, because in the past, the city has had trouble with that, where company vehicles are on vacation. Not necessarily the mayor, other employees I'm referring to actually in particular, where that's been an issue in the past, especially with accidents that have happened. So that didn't work out, because NICOM said, "We can't do it that way." So I've just been charging mileage. And my mileage reimbursements have been anywhere from like $150 for the mileage, up to, if I've done a lot of back and forth to Albany, for example, upwards of maybe $280 per month for the mileage.
So you charge mileage, you charge your government rate, right?
Yeah, $0.65 a mile.
Okay, so you don't charge any gas that you put in your car?
Well, that's technically part of the mileage. Yeah, that's upwards.
I know, I did it for a thousand.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we keep track of that. You can look up the reports. Basically, anything that I do as far as a meeting, off-site, we don't really keep track of the ones on the weekend, to be honest with you, but like Monday through Friday, or if it's travel for the city, like to Schenectady, I had to go to something for the governor. I had, you know, all that stuff is included in what I charge for the mileage for that. So it works out to be like, like I said, probably averages maybe like $180, $190 a month. So, you know, and I did take that vehicle and turn it over to CID, so we didn't have to purchase a vehicle last year, an additional vehicle, so that's what I did with the vehicle.
Okay.
All right.
So the gas from L is pretty much reduced to a vehicle, or do you charge it today?
So that's what I've been charging it to, because that's appropriate, in my opinion. So, yeah, that's what we've been aligning that to, so hopefully, you know...
The same thing goes for the chief of staff, does the same thing?
No, he hasn't been charging mileage, although if he drives, I've been saying that he probably should. But, no, he's not. But also with other departments, we've been kind of bringing vehicles back in. So as we start doing things like employees of the city are going off-site or out of the city for extended periods of time, or it's an actual, you know, blatant work-related event in another town, for example, I'm trying to encourage that people use that, because that's a much more efficient way to deal with it, rather than having cars going home and sitting in people's driveways that we got to pay for. Just across the board, I'm just trying to set that example as well.
Joe?
Yeah, thank you. Social security, are we looking at that 7.65% of salaries when we calculate this throughout?
It's supposed to be. It's a formula of the budget. It's 1.0765 or 756.
That goes into salaries, I know it wouldn't be reflected in the mayor's department, but wages as well?
Uh, it should, like in the budget in general, if there's overtime, holiday pay, anything that, like in the Excel, we just have that all lumped in in a formula.
What about replacement overtime, standby pay?
It should be, yeah.
Just wanted to clarify that as we go throughout, thanks.
Anybody else?
Uh, yeah, can you go over what the contracted services are for?
So contracted services are for mailers, different things we've had to research. We have not used all that. The intent of putting that contracted services in there, the amount it was last year, is that I did want to do a state-of-the-city mailer, which I still plan on doing. It took quite some time to get a lot of the different controls in place. I kind of put that as a secondary priority to everything I wanted to get in order with contract and supply and engineering, but you'll see an RFP go out, actually, for a state-of-the-city mailer fairly soon through engineering. So while I did reduce that line from last year, I think it's very important for us to do that. School district does it. As a city, that's something we need to be able to broadcast and communicate with people. So that's, that's really why I'm keeping that in there, but lessening it, so, you know.
Anyone else? Last call.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, thank you very much. And then, we hit contracted services. Education and training, I kept in there, because depending on what we're doing, NICOM also does what they call, I can't remember if it's like a NICOM, they do like a fall school. So, for example, it wasn't myself, the chief of staff, or say even my secretary, for example, executive assistant, but we did have the budget director, for example, go to the finance-based NICOM trainings last year. So we are really focusing on education and training, so I do want to retain that, so that if we can do things like that. Also within the contracted services, if we need to do any, like you guys are always requesting a lot of different audits, et cetera, because there's not many people in our office, if we need to contract out to do any type of small research for budgetary stuff, a lot of the stuff I did for like the financial position of the city, and I wrote that AIM resolution that you all supported, which was, thank you by the way, unanimously, like I did a lot of the research and all the analysis for all those numbers. If at some point I might want to do a small contract for an actuary to come in and do analysis on different things, that's something else we may need that for, because we are trying to make the best informed decisions possible. So outside of utilizing that line to communicate with the public what the city is doing and how we are delivering services, that's another use for that line, even though I did reduce it over last year, because I didn't get to everything I wanted to get to, so...
Very good, sir.
Cool, thank you. All right, and then I will be at the council meeting Wednesday as well. If you don't have a full-on kind of like barrage of questions yet, I would also like to do another full meeting with the council as well, so you can, if you guys want to go through the budget line for the line, and discuss the details of things like debt service and future plans for that, to see where we can go with it. We'll do that. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Have a great day.
Can I flip the coin, who wants to go next, or?
You can have mercy on IT or?
Sure.
I guess, but I really don't mind if you guys can figure it out yourself. It's up to, I think they're, they're going to fight it out and let us know. Jack just, I say give IT down, because IT I have kind of questions. Do you mind, sir? I think up next, we'll start with information technology.
Frank, you're probably going to be the shortest, right?
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Page 37.
I think I just, I thought you guys asked questions.
This one's a hard one, because we're kind of re-establishing things this year, right? This one, this year, we're going to be trying to do less outside services and bring things more internal?
So the biggest change, the only real big change in the budget is moving from contracted services for information technology to internal people. That's, so money's been shifted from contracted services to the salaries line. Salary's line is two people we're hiring. We have one that started today, and another one we're hoping to get shortly. That'll replace OMI reframes. So contracted services for IT support has always, not always been, for a long time has been higher-level support, backend stuff you guys don't see, and two people, one here and one at the police department. So between those people, myself, we handle all users in the city of Utica. So you're hundreds and hundreds of them. All the equipment and all the design of the systems all comes out of my office. To move forward, though, there's so much information, there's so much continuity of services that we can't afford to have temporary help anymore. We shouldn't have done this for a few years. So what we've, the mayor's finally agreed to is hiring our own people. That'll be two individuals, one will be primarily in City Hall, the other one will be at the police department. And again, we service everybody the same way. And we're getting rid of the rest of that burden on the higher-level support. We have that pared down to a company we worked with for a lot of years for questions and answers. And they're on a block of hours that is not, it doesn't expire until we run out of hours. So we've retailored all of the, the way that money in that department is working. So you'll see a great decrease in the contracted services line from City Hall or from the IT department here and police department and fire department. The salaries for the people that are in that department now will be, are much, much less than the contracted services has been for the, in the past years, past a lot of years. That makes sense?
So we'll go around and...
No, I don't have a question at this time. I don't have a question, yeah. Oh, Bob, you said. I thought you said huh.
Did you have a question?
No, I thought you said huh, so I said it again. Bob.
Yeah, thanks. The contracted services you spoke about, can you give an example of moving forward, what expenditures on contracted services would look like with the shift in framework?
So the contracted services line, what's coming out of there for the, this budget here, the one we're in now, is, it was a two-year contract, it was about $497,000. That was split up 40, 40, 20. 40% comes out of City Hall, 40% from police, 20% from fire. And each year, that's obviously about $250,000, $248,000, something like that. That's going away.
The other half of this is going to show up under police?
No, none of it is showing up under police. Also the salary line, sorry. So to answer Joe's question, which kind of dovetails with yours, is the salaries are being observed by City Hall. So it won't be a...
And in the, in that current contracted services line, the 441 line? So what is an example of moving forward, what that line, what expenditures related to that line will be utilized for? Like the 20,000 this year, let's say?
So what else comes out of there other than this, than that? A copy machine. There is a line item for, a couple of things are going away, actually. There's one item for Silance, which is a, our department has used for years. We moved away from that. One was a state, the state has purchased on behalf of all municipalities, largest municipalities in each county, way more advanced than they're paying for it, so that, that number will go away. Some of the other things in there are just, there's one line item you'll see for Cambridge, and really that's, that's Silance, I'm sorry. There's another one for Sergeant Labs. That's a network monitoring tool that we use, actually, that's the same place. That's about $9,000, $10,000 a year. So the contracted services line, without going through every single thing in here, there's SSL certificates, those are secure socket layer certificates that we have to have for the website and the immunist program, and anything that's forward-facing. That basically tells the public we are, we are. So that's an ongoing expense, not huge, but it happens every year, sometimes multiple times within a year. So I didn't even see that it has the word caporalonics going away. I didn't even see with upper 90s going away. And that reflects the, the, moving from $126,000 down to $20,000.
So my question is...
Well, let's go to Frank.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we already had a meeting on changing over.
Yeah, but I...
Over this.
You good, Frank?
Well, we didn't go over the numbers. Okay, so, my question here is, so we add...
My question here is, so the actual for this year is one twenty-five, hundred twenty-five, five fifty-nine, correct? Am I reading that right? Under contracted services, that would be the salaries that we pay out these guys is one twenty-five, five fifty-nine, right? FYI, actuals, year-to-date?
Yeah, I have one on thirty-hundred and twenty-five.
Yes.
Mine says one oh-two.
Mine says.
Unless you're adding some security.
No, I'm just going right down underneath it, it says one twenty-five, five fifty-nine.
Page thirty-seven?
Yes. Right, I mean, I can straight, right here. And my, my question is, so now we're gonna go down to, right here. Am I reading it wrong, or am I right?
Councilman Vickers, I think our copies are a bit more updated than the E and A version, so I think our numbers are gonna be a little bit different, yeah.
So now, mine says one twenty-five, five fifty-nine, next year it's gonna be twenty thousand, okay? So that's a saver of a hundred and five thousand dollars. But when we go up to the salaries, the actual, the salaries, we're going from one twenty-seven to two eighty-two, where is the savings? I know they said this was gonna be a big savings.
What you're looking at is the one twenty-six is only forty percent.
It was budgeted for a hundred and forty.
Oh, the one, the one twenty-seven, one twenty-seven, seventy-four, okay?
Another twenty percent, now forty percent.
But Joe, you're right, it's budgeted for a hundred and forty-five thousand, so I see what you're saying. It's still.
I don't see nothing to do with a hundred and forty-five thousand.
That's what it's budgeted for, for the whole year, for salaries? So your question, I think, still stands of, what does that jump from one hundred forty-five thousand to two hundred and seventy thousand?
I don't see either one of those calls, two sixty-nine, ninety-three.
Under the revised budget, a hundred forty-four thousand, three eighty-one.
So what's in, what's in the salary line coming forward, would be my salary, which isn't changing, um, and the two IT support technicians, one of them is on board right now.
Well, that makes sense when it's saying it's only for, this is only for eight months, not twelve, so, okay. I understand. Seems basic.
We're good, Joe?
Yeah.
Mark? These are small numbers, but office supplies, supply materials, printing, you have a bunch of zeros in there, actual zeros, two seventy-three, but requested fifteen hundred, five hundred, five hundred, or fifteen hundred, five hundred, five hundred.
So office supplies, I, I really, I mean, we don't get a lot of office supplies, to be honest with you. We have to buy a few things that are considered office supplies, trailers and things like that. Maybe, uh, memory sticks will come out of there, not for us, but when people request English CDs, they'll come out of there. That kind of fluctuates. Printing, we don't, we don't do any printing. Supplies and other materials.
When you request five hundred, we don't do any printing?
Well, that was, business cards could come out of there, those need to be done. So we got three, you know, three people now that we get business cards for, so that will come out of the printing line. I haven't printed in a while, so that's what's gonna come out of there. Supplies and office materials, probably right now are going to be new ribbon for the ID car burner, because we only, you know, that, that has a limited lifetime. But that's the stuff that would be in there.
See ya. All right. Um, just quick update on the, on the poles, how are we going on the pole cameras? Have we got them under, or?
We have quite a few installed, and we have, currently, we have some ready to be installed, but there is no money in this budget to go further with that. There's, I don't know if there's money in the Police budget, but there is no money in this budget that I can see to move forward beyond what we have. We have installed, we have two installed. So we're not getting into real details about that. We have probably, just get on, off the top, I have probably thirty-five, thirty-eight more to go. Currently, we have the equipment for it, um, but everything's a little bit, it shifts, it's different, depending on network, yeah, for locations.
Chief, will you give me a long?
The chief?
All right, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Chief, do any of you have to be anywhere soon, or are you both on? All right, someone just, we'll go with the, we'll go with the Fire Department and just work our way around it. You're on.
If I can remind everybody, just turn on your mics, there was a request. Page sixty-five.
All right, does anyone wanna start? You guys wanna just?
Well, you can give us a little, you know, just going down and.
All right, so, um, so, uh, we knew going into the budget request that this is gonna be a lean year. We tried to be conservative with what we were, you know, trying to balance our needs with the wants, and just, uh, keep on updating our equipment. Obviously, a lot of our, most of our, um, costs that you see in lines are associated with contractual obligations, personnel. Really only got about two-point-five million out of the entire budget that's, has anything to do with, um, non-contractual, uh, items that are in the budget, that live within that budget. Retirement contribution's gone up, healthcare contribution's obviously gone up. You know, uh, in the last year, we've been able to complete some projects under capital. Our buildings are not getting any younger, as you guys all know.
You've done a lot out of both.
We have, uh, two of the buildings, uh, we've, we've made some great progress, we've completed two projects, uh, the West Utica Fire Station being, uh, one of the most recent completions. We have a couple grants out there, uh, we're gonna be able to do the roof at the Fire Academy, which is really a priority, we have a lot of leaks going on at that building, that building was built in nineteen oh-six. Obviously, is built at the same time as the White Street Fire Station. So, we use it extensively. You notice, um, the Fire Academy in the past years has been really successful, we had to increase our rates, uh, but we did bring in about two hundred thousand dollars in revenue into the academy by, uh, hosting, uh, two classes, we got another class starting in March. Ambulance service continues to, uh, be extremely busy, eighty, over eighty-one hundred transports in twenty twenty-four. Hospital delays at the ER, we've been dealing with them, that's been a significant. It's going okay, um, we've had some, uh, multiple meetings, uh, they've been receptive, we've had some issues, uh, but again, you know, uh, getting down there and, uh, getting some people involved, we've been able to clear, clear up some of the backlog, some of the days it's just, uh, they are inundated with, uh, patients. What that does causes a backlog for our ambulances, um, we can't turn over a patient to the nursing, uh, to the nursing staff, uh, we can't get an ambulance out of there. And on busy days, uh, even just a short time ago, uh, we're looking at hour-plus waits to turn over an ambulance, so we have ambulance agencies coming from all over the county. Recently, last week, uh, we had a couple days where we had vinyl ambulance coming from the City of Unita, uh, and.
Because they're inundated, or?
No, because we were inundated, because we're backed up.
But I'm double, yeah.
Yeah, because, because of the hospital, yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's just dominoes, when the hospital gets backed up, we can't turn over patients, uh, we start, uh, with outer, uh, ambulance services coming in, and, you know, even on days that we don't, um, necessarily, uh, the hospitals aren't busy, we're still missing calls with our ambulances just because of the sheer volume of calls. So, we, eh, you know, just a cursory look every month, we're probably, we probably don't have an ambulance available for around a hundred calls a month, eh, at least, so that's where other agencies would have to come into the city. You know, that's, that's something that we deal with on a pretty regular basis, the ambulance service is, is extremely busy, um, you know, busiest in, in the region. So, uh, those, the guys and gals that work at that station, work at Station Seven, uh, they really, uh, they put up with a lot, they, uh, they provide a great service, and, uh, you know, a lot of the stuff that we do is try to support them.
Are you starting with, uh?
Yeah. Uh, I'm really, uh, concerned with the harbor opening, and I was wondering if any of these lines address.
Can you say that again?
I'm concerned with the harbor opening, and I wanna know if any of these lines address equipment for water rescue.
They do not, right now. I am highly concerned with the harbor opening as well, just because it's such a capability gap that we don't have in the Fire Department right now.
Do you know how much a rescue boat would be? Have you guys looked at that yet?
Yeah, yeah, we're really diving into that. The fully equipped and trained, you know, it, it's one thing to get the equipment, it's another thing to get the training done, and so that's, they really go hand-in-hand with each other, and then it's the ongoing, it's the commitment to the ongoing training, um, and a high-risk, uh, low-frequency, uh, use, so you know, you gotta, you gotta be out there and train with that, so, you know. Water rescue equipment with a boat, and we're not looking for an extraordinary boat, we're looking for a boat that you use at the Riscany, for, at the training center there, it'd be the same style boat, it's about thirty-five thousand dollars. And with the additional equipment cost, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of, of an additional sixty thousand, so you'd be looking at about a hundred thousand dollars in life-saving equipment, and then probably somewhere in, uh, between fifty and eighty thousand to train up enough personnel so you have the capability to effective response. Uh, the initial training's thirty-two hours a person, uh, you do all the training at SPTC, at the State Preparedness Training Center, in a Riscany, some local training, um, you know, but, uh, you know, with the harbor opening and other things going on, it's definitely concerning, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, and I saw that the City of Utica, they received a grant for up to two hundred fifty thousand for their rescue boat, so hopefully we can start looking at
Yep.
any of those state initiatives, so that was my main question, so.
Yep.
Let it, leave it to Bob.
Bob, you're up. Well, thank you. I got one question, do we have one mechanic now?
Yeah, we've only, uh, we've only had one mechanic since about two thousand and six. Yeah, yep, yep, and mechanic, uh, we, uh, obviously, our former mechanic, Chris Stevens, retired last year, and, uh, we got a new person on, he's been, uh, put right to work, fantastic employee, he's doing well, he's learning, uh, he started right in, he worked on fire trucks, uh, through, uh, a couple private companies, uh, before he came to us, and, uh, he's doing great, there's a lot of work to do, uh, obviously, we have a fleet of about thirty vehicles, uh, between heavy vehicles and lighter vehicles, including the ambulances, so we keep him on his toes, and he is, uh, very busy. The vehicles that we have are heavy apparatus, um, you know, we try to keep them in as good a shape as possible, obviously, you guys have helped us immensely in purchasing vehicles over the past decade or so, uh, we have a newer fleet, but with the newer fleet comes newer problems. A lot of the emissions issues, we deal with a lot of emissions issues on a regular basis, so, uh, unfortunately, the fire service, emergency services weren't exempted from some of the EPA standards, so we deal a lot with, um, just a lot of computer issues with the apparatus, so it's, it's a challenge to keep them going sometimes. We went through a lot of turbos with the Cummins motors, we don't know why, but, um, I don't know if it's the idle time, or it's just a lot of stop-and-go with, with the engines, but, um, we definitely have some issues with them, uh, that, it's just, it's, it's, and it's not just a Utica specific problem, it's a nationwide problem, um, you read about it all over the place, and, uh, it's something that's a challenge.
One other question, how many, how many people would you have to train for the waters?
Uh, you know.
Chief, never not to know, like, you still have the Sheriff's Office that helps you with their water rescue.
That's what I was just gonna talk about. When somebody falls.
Water, it's not like they're drowning.
I, I've had these same concerns, because the harbor's in my district, and I went to the mayor, and we talked about it, and it's no different if somebody falls in the Barge Canal or the Mohawk River, we send people there to rescue them, correct?
Yeah, we can't. We can't enter the water.
Right.
So we have to wait to send the signal to you?
Somebody comes, right?
Eh, 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 I mean, eh, there's a delay. I mean, eh, it's, you know, we have basic water rescue skills, so you can throw a rope bag to them, you know, if they can grab the bag, great. If they can't, we gotta send someone into the water to get them.
Bobby, thank you, thank you very much. Joe?
Thanks, thanks, Chief. Uh, I actually wanna start on the, the revenue side, uh, with the ambulance EMT service. Uh, so we look back fiscal year twenty-three, two-point-nine million in revenue through the ambulance service, fiscal year twenty-four, uh, three-point-two million in revenue. Can, can you give an outlook and, and try and project, let's say, three years, uh, on the revenue side, and where we see that ambulance service going? What I'm getting at is, are we, are we peaking, plateauing? Is there any sign that we are, or will we continue, you know, to, to increase on the revenue side? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Uh, I, I think we're really starting to peak, just because the volume, we've really reached saturation with three ambulances available. And, uh, there's only, eh, you know, the hospital delays, with other calls going on, there's only so many calls that we can get to, you know? If, eh, all three of our ambulances are out, and another two or three calls come in, we're missing those calls, you know? It, you know, the other thing is, is the personnel assigned to that station, they cross-staff, so they're on an engine as well. So, if that engine is out on the call, then it takes two ambulances out, it's certain, uh, you know, depending on the daily staffing, so, um, yeah, we're, we're gonna, we are missing calls. I don't know how much more we can squeeze out of that, you know, our guys are, they're busy.
Well, then that was my next question. Are we talking an issue of not having enough ambulances, not even having enough staff, or both? Like, if there were four ambulances, would you expect our ability to answer calls to go up by twenty-five percent? Or is it also a staffing issue too here? What are we thinking?
It's all, just to step in, it's, it's, it's all a timing thing, you know? Having four ambulances certainly make another one available. Would the first three catch it? Sometimes they would. So twenty-five percent, I think, would be, you know, in a perfect scenario, add one more, get another percentage, but, uh, you know, but it would certainly go off, those hundred calls that we miss, we would catch, you know, a percentage of those hundred calls.
And, and I know this question depends on a lot of outside factors, but, you know, when we look at, uh, year-to-date being brought in with the ambulance service, just to get an idea, uh, how long after service does the city generally receive payment? So if, if the date of service is January first, what can we typically expect to actually receive the, the money? Just to put a timeline in our heads as we're kind of trying to predict, you know?
Eh, eh, as crazy as it sounds, it's somewhere, our average is somewhere between thirty and a hundred eighty, eh. It's, uh, really, so, obviously, we, uh, build out through, uh, December thirty-first at twenty-three fifty-nine, um, you know, and we're gonna be waiting for those payments to catch up, it usually, it can take up to six months, uh, for those payments to catch up. So we're, you're gonna, eh, keep on seeing that, that year-to-date revenues, that should keep on increasing, uh, up until probably the June.
What page is that, uh, the revenues on here?
Uh, that's, uh, page six.
No, that, that's our page.
No, I, I, yeah.
All right, so the, the ambulance service revenue's on page six.
Yeah, it's on page six, yeah, it's on the revenue.
Yeah, I did have a question.
Yeah, departmental.
Uh, and, all right, uh, so to the expense side, uh, page sixty-five, I think we, we start with Fire Administration, just wanna go through a few to, to follow up on.
Yep.
Uh, so that subscriptions line, about two-thirds of the way down, four oh-five, uh, number four oh-five, uh, can you give us an idea of what some examples are of the subscriptions at this point?
Uh, let's see, part of this is, uh, I believe we're doing, uh, Policy and Procedure Manual, that's, uh, the online Lexible, I believe that comes out of there. Also, uh.
Sam Sarah.
Sam Sarah, uh, we have, do you pay for, is the, um, codes enforcement?
No.
That's out of the Fire Protection.
Just a few. Yeah, so it's more software subscriptions? We, we have, you know, a few fire-related, uh, written publications, uh, Chief's Association, but then nothing, nothing substantial. Lexible's ninety percent of that.
Yep.
And then, uh, on that next page, sixty-six, uh, when we're under the Fire Administration line, and specifically when we're talking about repairs, is that to physical structures, buildings, under, under that line specifically?
Yeah, that's for all the buildings.
Okay.
It's for the seven facilities, so, um, you know. It's for the seven facilities. So, you know, we experienced a tough year. We got multiple buildings that have had, we've, we've spent a lot of money keeping the boilers running. We spent a lot of money repairing roofs. We have constant breaks with water lines, water heaters, you know, it's just a pretty regular thing. Garage doors, overhead doors. So, we spent quite a bit of money to just keep the buildings up, running. We had hoped to get a couple of other projects done. Obviously, you know, we, you know, I don't know where we're gonna sit with our capital in the near future. But, we have, let's see, four, four buildings that their roofs are approaching, if not at thirty-plus years. And we have four buildings as well that have boilers that are really running on life support. So, it's something that we really got to take a look at.
I would just like that, it's kind of important, especially this year. Those repairs are not upgrades. Those are just repairs to keep things going. Like, when we say we repair a roof, it's not, we're not putting a new roof on it. It's, that's just patching a hole to stop the leak, you know? Same thing with doors. None of those, none of that hundred fifty thousand expense of fires been upgraded.
And then just the last question, page seventy-two, the fire EMT line, or, sorry, fire EMT department at the top. And then contracted services and contracted service billing, about two-thirds of the way down, four four one, and then four four one zero one. Could you briefly just explain the difference between the two so I could understand that better?
See, contracted services, I believe, is repairs under the, so we have-
We got Klima, Stericycle.
Yeah, we have a, so by law, we're supposed to, we have a medical director. We pay, we pay the medical director monthly out of the contracted services. And then we have radios that we have to maintain that are different than our fire radios, of course. So, that comes out of that. And then there's some repairs that come out of that as well.
And the waste.
Oh, yeah, Stericycle. Stericycle comes in and picks up medical waste at least once a week. We have oxygen deliveries that come with that. And then we have a contract for repairs for our stretchers and cardiac monitors.
All right, very good. Thank you, chief, deputy chief, appreciate it.
Great, do it up. I'm awesome. I can look at more.
Okay. I think I walked through the most of the fire departments with the rest of the council maybe about a year ago.
Yeah.
Hey, how's White Spur?
White Spur Street came out. I, I really think White Spur came out fantastic. It's complete. You can stop over whenever you'd like, just call me.
Yeah, I'll have to go in and look at it and see what-
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to take you through. Sam, you've been through White Spur Street already, I mean? Yeah, it came out. You know, that, that building's a fantastic building. We did, you know, as much as we could. And really, really came out nice.
All right, thanks.
Not good.
Thanks, chief.
So, the year-to-date for actuals ends when? Now? February?
In the March.
In the March, right?
Yep.
That's the actuals. So, like last year in two-
You mean right now, or?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the actuals, two thousand and twenty-five.
These represented February twentieth.
Yeah, it depends when they had that printed.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. You're gonna, and this ends April first, right?
Yeah.
So, you're gonna make an extra one-point-two million between now and April?
Are you looking at ambulance revenue?
On the ambulance revenue side?
So, to the chief's point, we'll be collecting that through, through the summer. Because we're anywhere from thirty days to hundred, to six months lag for payment.
This is through the insurance companies, correct?
Yeah, it's through-
And personal payment.
Yeah.
You know, we're not always first on everybody's list, and that'll check too.
Okay, and let's see. Now, I, on page sixty-five, you know, I just looked at actuals from twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-three, and I tried to average them out a little bit. Like, the electric and heat, you know, we averaged forty-two in twenty-four. We averaged some, you know, two thousand, three thousand, and twenty-five thus far. And we requested almost double. Mayor approved.
Yeah, the heat.
You're at fire administration, like the-
Yeah, yeah, all the different heat and everything else.
So, we don't, that's generally generated by the budget director. We don't see those bills. So, that's, we don't control those numbers at all.
All right. So, like I said, the actuals say the actuals, but if you average them out, you're quite a bit less the last three cycles.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And I know I mentioned those like ten years ago, and of course, it didn't happen. The other thing is that ARPA funding, and I didn't see, I don't remember the list, is any of the firehouses were done by ARPA funding under the Palmieri administration?
Yeah, yeah. Well, as far as improvements?
Improvements, and, and, you know, new overhead doors, new this, and that.
Yeah, so every station got a new plume event system. And we used, the plume event is the diesel exhaust removal systems. It's the hoses that hang from the ceilings. So, that's a huge benefit to fire better health and wellness and keep the stations clean.
So, like, okay, so when we go to this, all this electric, it goes through the budget director. That's basically it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as the, you tell those bills.
You don't really, okay.
Yeah.
All right. And let's see what else. Yeah, so like I'm, like I'm going down the line, you know, like overtime, I mean, if you average it out, you know, actuals sixty-three thousand right now, up until now, you're gonna use almost a hundred thousand by April first?
So, that overtime, so we crushed that, that overtime line is emergency overtime line for fires. So, this month alone, it, it's been a busy month. So, that will have come up quite substantially. So, that won't hit until next month on that. We've had a half dozen fire incidents that we've called back actual personnel for, plus, you know, going back to the ambulance delays, when our ambulances are getting delayed for an hour to two hours at the hospitals, we're calling back an extra ambulance because we just can't keep up with the call volume.
Yeah, like I see, you know, one eighteen on page sixty-seven, compensation, timed payout. It does kind of average two thirty-eight, two twenty-five, actuals two sixty-nine right now up until March.
Yep.
And you requested three hundred. Mayor approved two twenty-five. So, if you look, you know, over the last three years, and this is by averaging.
Yep.
You know, and, you know, for some reason, like replacement overtime, in twenty-four, you did nine eighty. Actuals twenty-three did four sixty-nine.
Yeah. So, in twenty-three, overtime existed in two places. It was in the fire line and it was in the EMS, the fire EMS line. Then we combined those lines together and just put them into ones. That's why there was, there's such a difference between the-
Yeah, if you look, if you look at fire EMT, there'll be another line with four hundred fifty. I believe it was, it was in four hundred, four fifty, and it was used up as well.
Yeah, three ninety-six in twenty-twenty-three, yeah.
Last year, we combined that because it was-
All right. Well, that's why I'm asking this quick. See, I just, I'm looking at the average over the last three cycles.
All right. And comp time payout is, so it, it depends on the, right, we can't control that. So, we-
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, we have no-
Certainly subject to raises as well. It doesn't matter when they earn it, when they get paid out, it's based on their current salary.
And how many retirements do you have planned this year, you're thinking?
Two, three, four, at least four. At least four, at least four that I know of right now.
And that's by the summer?
Yeah, that'll be by August. I mean, we have-
And you got an academy starting in June again, or something?
Academy starts-
March, middle of March.
In about a month.
And then middle of August.
How many candidates do we have going to Utica?
Uh, we're gonna have, well, we have three openings right now. We're gonna have two more by the end of March. And then probably one more by-
Yeah, but how many we got coming to U, you know, UFD?
UFD, we're, we're gonna have at least three in this academy, yeah, possibly five. Possibly four, maybe, possibly four.
So, you're sure we got three, possibly four, maybe five, right?
Yep.
And that line comes under what?
That, that's in the fire line under salaries.
Fire line under salaries. Yeah, so we got year-to-date for, like you said, eighty-one, mayor approved nine-point-five. We did nine-point-two, twenty-three, we did nine-point-six. Is that because you hired more? Or is that because it was lesser because of the safer grant?
It's less because of the safer. The safer, that's on page seventy-three. So, it's a little bit less because of the safer grant is offset in some of that.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had one question that came to mind. Looking at this budget, obviously, we have a ten percent tax increase. I think we need to capitalize on as much revenue as possible. I want to look at the training academy. That seems like it's going well. And I wanted to hear if there were ways to increase that revenue, or what your thoughts are. Actually, that's one of my concerns, is that they're not. Because the food revenue says fifty thousand and our expenses say seventy-five thousand. So, that's kind of what triggered that question. But, if you could elaborate on how that's going.
What's, what's the question? The food line, or the?
Well, I guess the food line, yeah. Why would it be fifty thousand? We're only accounting for revenue and seventy-five thousand for the expense.
The only thing that wouldn't be revenue would be the Utica. We collect revenue from everybody, every outside agency. So, you just subtract, it's about sixteen hundred per student, per cadet, on the usual side. Other than that, they should be-
How many trainings are we doing a year?
Two.
Two. Did we do three last year?
We did three. One, we took, we did this modified, like, like five.
Do we still have that issue with the state where they had to reroute people and send them to us?
No, some people have chose, some-
Wasn't really an issue.
Some municipalities have chosen to send us due to issues with the state, but they're not-
Are the classes still maxed out? Is there a way to?
In our current facility, we're maxed out. We have been for the last several classes.
Would three a year be feasible, long-term?
Not-
With what we currently have?
Weather-related. I think the last class graduated almost towards Christmas, middle to end of December. That's pushing it.
How much does the academy bring in?
Last, sixty, last, we're sixty-five hundred a student.
Okay.
Minus the food expense.
How many students per academy?
It's been averaging thirty, I think. So, it's, we have right around forty-two signed up right now, which is too many. But, general, generally municipalities, you know, they think they're hiring five, they'll end up with three or four. So, we, we somewhat purposely overbook a little bit because we know some are gonna drop off.
Well, so, if there's thirty-eight, they don't all do sixty-five hundred, right?
I mean, thirty's a good number to use as an average. So, sixty is a year.
Yeah, that's about four hundred thousand. Obviously, there's expenses to run it. That's not all just profit, but-
Yeah, right.
Seems to go. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to look closer at that line. Appreciate it.
So, the food, that sixty-five hundred, the food is part of that. So, you're looking at forty-nine hundred plus sixteen for the food, you know what I mean? So, we clock sixty-five hundred, sixteen, and that automatically goes to food service.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? I, I just have one more question. Let's say you have, you have two road ambulance back, or is it three?
Two.
Yeah. Let's say that they're at the hospital, all right, and they're getting delayed. Let's say they get off at noon, or twelve, or twelve midnight, I'm not sure which hour we're at. And they get, and, and, do they get replaced, or they stay there the whole time? Do they get replaced by the new unit coming out, or do they stay there until they're done?
Um, so, if, so for us, we work eight to eight. So, if, if they're gonna be at the hospital after eight o'clock, we'll send the on, oncoming crew down. But, it won't be until after eight o'clock. So, it'll be some holdover time.
Right, not, not all of them.
Yeah, we wouldn't hold them over indefinitely, you know? Most of the time, you know, I, I will say, the hospital's pretty good at trying to get our people moving along, you know? But, when the hospital is inundated, it, you know, if there's a bottleneck, it just all slows down.
Sometimes the better option is just to let that crew stay there and pay them anyway, and staff the fourth ambulance with the oncoming crew.
Yeah, just, just so we got somebody else to handle other calls.
Depends on whether you're gonna get stuck there.
Correct, correct.
It's expensive, right?
Sure. Yeah, try to, try to get people out of there.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Guys mind if I stay for you? Does he mind if I stay for you? Just kidding. Really has a heart, cut the dog. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Last but not least, chief, you're on.
Hey, Jack, how are you?
Very good. And yourself?
Good. So, going every budget year, we always look at the upcoming calendar year. We look at things such as staffing. We look at equipment, we look at training tool, just, and grant opportunities going into it. One of the things we identified right away is, as you know, the sunset clause for our police compact was reduced by five as of December thirty-first of last year. Those five retirements have sunset occurred since January. All five are gone. However, in addition to the void of those five officers, I'm gonna, I just had an officer resign going back to state corrections. I had another, another officer that's gonna be leaving to go to the New York State Police in March. And from April to August, just canvassing these five other officers, they're all expected to retire before end of August of this year.
What's the total?
It brings me down to a total of twelve, minus twelve officers altogether.
You're losing twelve.
Yes. In addition to that, the other problem I have is, on top of that, I have four long-term two oh seven C officers that have been injured on the job, and they are likely never coming back to law enforcement. So, that puts me down sixteen officers. And in the meantime, demand for police services only increases. During this past year, we took on being, having to have a temporary dog shelter. My understanding with negotiations with the Humane Society, they wanted at least a half million dollars just to come to the table to negotiate. But their goal was to get one million dollars from the city of Utica to do all animal controls, sheltering for the city of Utica. We were asked by the mayor's office to take that on, which we did. And we're doing it for under, or just over two hundred thousand dollars, which has been a huge saving to the city. If you look at what the Humane Society's been looking at.
Chief, who's actually doing performing the functions?
Well, we have two animal control slash parking enforcement officers. But, the reality is, the majority of the time is being spent now on animal control. We have since contracted with the animal shelter in Madison County. These officers work a seven-hour shift. But when they go to Madison County, you lose at least an hour each way in just transportation. So, it reduces their time schedule.
Plus taking care of the dogs and stuff.
Exactly. The other issue I'm having on my other shifts, the four to twelve shift, which is my busiest shift, I'm taking officers off the street to clean cages, walk dogs, and, and feed these animals.
That'd be more than two hundred thousand.
Yeah. So, we, we are, and we are basically to a point where that branch is, it's spending to the point it's gonna break. On top of that, there's all these social issues that were never meant for police to handle, meant to help-
I'm trying to interrupt you, Bob.
Sure.
Now, this, this is sort of cutting down on the amount of time you can get traffic to pigs. So, which is hurts our revenues.
For parking enforcement.
And do you, do we know what the differences this year is comparable to that year?
I don't have that figure yet.
That'd be interesting.
Yeah. I could try to get that for you.
It's a lot cheaper than a million dollars than you would have been spending. Chief, how many dogs, and I know you're, I'm just joking, but how many dogs went to Madison County?
I don't have that figure. I can give it for, kept it all. But, we've been working with three different animal rescue places. One, another one's in Vernon, and one, the-
Rover's Rescue?
Rover's Rescue as well. I mean, and they, all these three entities have really stepped up out of this. I can't give them enough credit, especially for what they're asking for. But, the other issue I have is that now, this is the busiest time of the year. But the other issue I have is that now, this is the busiest time of the year, we've got all these events coming up. Outdoor events, you've got St. Patrick's Day, you've got Fourth of July, you've got the Boiler Maker, you've got the Towers for Tonner Race, you've got the following these racing, you've got the, um, Bank of New York and New Year's Eve event. That's all handled by us. We seamlessly do this every year, and it goes unnoticed basically because we don't have problems because it's well planned for to the credit of Captain Holt and the officers that worked the event. So when we look at the budget, we always look to try to see it when it comes to grants pick up. So you don't have to, to save our city taxpayers the, um, having to pay for equipment, which technology right now is solving a lot of crime. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but this past year, we received, uh, almost a million dollars in a grant from DCGS for technology for gun violence. With that equipment, we bought pole cameras, stationary plate, and vehicle plate readers, uh, shot spotter equipment, a NiBINS machine, which is a national integrated ballistic network where we could actually do ballistic comparisons of shell cases, the guns that we recover. On top of that, we've also bought what we call Bosch equipment. These are for fatal and serious motor vehicle wrecks where we can download the data from the vehicle to find out how fast it was going, what was braking, things like that. So again, these are all equipment needs that, uh, we don't go to the taxpayers for, we find grants for. On top of that, and we have five positions that are, uh, that are either being paid fully or partially through grants, which do not affect our comp. So again, we, we always look to see if we can reduce costs for our taxpayers. One of the concerns I have is that training. We are a state accredited police agency, which means that we follow the best policies and practices for police departments in the state. Only less than fifty percent of the agencies in New York State, there's over five hundred police agencies that have state accreditation. To maintain accreditation, you also have to maintain that you have the best policies in place to include you're having, uh, you're also making sure that you have the best training in place. Training is critical for this police department. We have a young department. If you look at our busiest shift, which is basically done by seniority, is the four to twelve shift. Though, two-thirds of that, of the four to twelve shift is made up of officers with less than two-year street experience. On top of that, I have, uh, most of my sergeants on that shift are also newly assigned promoted sergeants as well. Training is critical to a police agency. As John O'Reilly once told me, is the corporation council, you're either going to pay in lawsuits, you're going to pay in training, one or the other, and there's a lot of truth to that.
Do you have any captains on that shift to supervise?
I have a night captain. Thanks to the county council for.
Yeah, we took care of it.
For, exactly, and we, we're grateful for that.
Soon as he's done, okay.
Yeah, we're grateful for that. But you know, the other issue that we're facing is recruitment. Uh, it's down not only nationally, but we're seeing it locally. You know, one of the problems we're facing recently with our own recruiting is that we had a list of ninety-five candidates, which is higher than most of the other local police agencies with the exception of state police. By the time the physical agility tests came, we only had twenty-four candidates to possibly, uh, look at. That's before backgrounds, polygraphs, medical examinations, and everything. The problems were competing with four other agencies for the same twenty-four years, a lot of those kids. When these young men and women look to become police officers, one of the things they look at is starting salary. We are now the lowest paid starting salary in our, in our county. And it's something, contractually, I hope that it can be looked at in the future. So these are my problems with. What's that?
Is it close, is it thousands, is it?
So our starting salary for police officers is fifty-six thousand. New Hartford PD is, uh, sixty-nine, Sheriff's Department's sixty-four, State Police is eighty-one, and after one, one year, it jumps up to ninety-four. Rome is kind of comparable, just slightly ahead of us.
Rome is ahead of you?
Yeah, slightly.
I know New Hartford has a lot of money, State Police have a lot of money. It's tough, it's tough being in the city.
It is, same with the county. But you know what the issue in our county is? We're the largest police agency in this county. Who do you think they come to? Either because of the experience or the diverse type of amount of calls that we have, or the, just the manpower that we have. About the most recent example was the county asked for our help for the arraignment of those correction officers. That was all on county grounds. Who did they rely on to help them? It was you, the police department, and we were the incident commanders. One of our captains was the incident commander. They planned and organized all that, it went smooth.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Sam, did you want to start this thing?
Oh, okay.
Mark?
Uh, go the other way.
Okay.
We tried.
They're complaining we're going the wrong way.
I have questions.
We'll go back this way.
Uh, are we still doing the school contract every month? How many officers?
We're sorry.
The school contract every month, are we still supporting the schools with police officers?
Yeah, so the mayor signed a contract with them just before the school year, uh, last year, and it's, the overtime's one-hundred percent reimbursable. The issue is that there's so many grants and so many entities demanding police services, whether it be the hospital, Munson Williams, uh, just to name a few, that are all asking for police services because they want public safety.
And I was curious, how many officers?
So I think that gets confused with the fire department and the ambulance service. Those officers are not working. They're, they're, they're coming in.
On their own.
On their shift to work overtime.
It's not revenue.
It's not revenue. It's, it's, you know, I know, and there's a line for revenue, but all that money is, is paid back out, you know, over time. Those are not officers who are working their shift, and in addition to working their shift, we're being.
So we're not taking it out of, you're already down twelve guys and?
Correct. They, they, these are coming on, they're coming in on their off time, taking time off to work these shifts, which we're, they're reimbursed for, but it's directly being paid back out to the officer.
Sure. And then I, I'm glad Cassandra's here with all the grants, knowledge, and great job for all the money you guys are bringing in. One of the concerns I do have though is with the cops grant, I know we got the six hundred and twenty-five thousand, and, uh, that's if we keep on five officers through the ARPA sunsets. Uh, have those people already sunset though? Because we are, this budget looks like it's going to account for five officers and the two hundred thousand dollars from this one-third of the year.
I don't know how, I, I just know from our standpoint, right now, we have no one to hire. We will give a, um, hopefully give one condition offer employment in the near future based on the recent resignation, but the only way that grant can be utilized, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we add to our comp. Correct?
It was a layoff of, yeah, anybody who's, it can be used to retain anybody who would be laid off as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. So I just want to also, yeah, I mean, if you guys need the support, but also if we have to pay back people out of this, that's a concern, that's all. And then to the parking tickets question, we are only fifty-three percent of what we were hoping to be for parking tickets this year. Obviously, there's like forty days left in the year, but that is something I think we should revisit with parking and all the dog commitments we have.
Yeah, based on their current tasks with the animal control officers slash parking enforcement officers, there's been talks with the mayor about adding a third person. If I had that third person, you would concentrate solely on parking enforcement. The reason why is that I believe there's a lot of, uh, revenue that we could be going after when it comes to booting vehicles.
There sure is. Been there, yeah. And, uh, we get a lot of, uh, concerns in, in downtown too right now. And I'm hoping that, uh, the city just make the push for parking meters too, so hopefully that takes the pressure off what we keep bringing in the revenue.
But I'm also hoping that they put in the kiosses that they spoke about. It'd be much easier to do time parking if there were kiosses.
That'd be great, yeah, ideally. So that's all my questions.
Okay, yeah, I, I do have a question. With the, uh, dogs, you're taking an actual police officer off the street to, to take care of our animals?
Occasionally do.
Is that right? Do we, do we have volunteers that come in? You know, because I know there's, there's a ton of animal people out there, whether dog cats. I thought maybe they could come in and donate some time, maybe clean, feed, walk.
So we've talked to the mayor's office about that. They were looking into bringing in volunteers basically for wanderers rescue. The concern was by corporation councils, they ran our property and they got hurt. Who's going to pay, uh, for, you know, those costs for liability, hospitalization? So we're waiting to hear back from corporation council before they possibly go forward with that volunteer program.
And, and how many do, I, I hear they're going to change the laws going into next year for these dogs or the way you keep the dogs? Have you heard anything about, uh, new laws or new regulations on what you need to do to, you know, take care of these?
Nothing I'm aware of. I know that from our standpoint, our temporary dog shelter, we have to hold the dogs for five days in hopes that the owners would be found. The large majority of the dogs that we find, they're mixed pit bulls. They're usually abandoned dogs, you're not going to find a owner. They're also the most difficult to try to adopt and try to modify behavior to be adopted. And, uh, you know, it's sad, I mean, that, that this happens. We are even seeing recently, the most disturbing trend is that our homeless population, once they find shelter, they have their own pets, and then they abandon their pets, and then they become our problem, they have to deal with it.
Thank you. Joe?
Thanks, thanks, chief, deputy chief for coming in. Uh, just to parse that out, uh, what the deputy chief was mentioning about the UPD special services bringing it, I, I just want to clarify, so I'm making sure I get this right. So on the revenue side, and I'm looking at, at page six, that police special services, is that what we were referring to when we were talking about the contra, and I have a copy here of, uh?
I believe it is referred to as special services in, in the budget, yes.
Okay, and on the?
I just wanted, so that's a councilwoman I asked a question. We have five officers at Proctor and two at Donovan, two at JFK. I didn't answer that question.
Okay.
Ties into your.
Okay, and this is helpful because, all right, so that's on the revenue side, then we look at the expense side.
Yep.
Now, in the, in the annual estimate on page forty-six, that overtime pay for UPD special services, do those, are, are they related or those, is one the revenue side and one's the expense side of the same line? Is that what we're talking about? I have a copy here if you want to.
Where is it, Joe?
Uh, so the expense side is page forty-six.
So, so that wouldn't just be the school, it would be all our kind of contractual services?
Okay, so, uh, I'm sorry, so the, the revenue.
It should be almost like a net zero, really.
Okay, um, and the reason I ask is, you know, just, it's obviously not going to be, um, I don't want to use the word profit because we're a municipality, so just seeing what's left over out of that. It, it looks like, um.
Is it, I mean, is it, there could be over, it could be over on it, it's, it's a rough house now, much to talk.
Yeah, I mean, it varies so much year to year, it seems like, um, I mean, the twenty-four actuals, we brought in a million versus, you know, the twenty-three actuals weren't close to that, but just comparing the revenue and expense side, it looks like, and this is just from my understanding, so it looks like the, the ENA approved six hundred K in revenue on the special services side and are projecting four hundred K going out on that same line if we're looking at the balance. And this is just, and this is the mayor's and ENA's projection, nothing to do with the council.
I just want to, projections are not accurate, they really, so we had an actuary, uh, calculate the overtime rate that we charge, which incorporates all, not only salary, time and a half, but, uh.
Pensions.
Pension, you know, by, uh, all the costs associated with the officer.
Just everything that goes.
Everything that goes with it, so I would argue that that number should be, um, a net zero at the end of the day.
And it is interesting too, because on that expense side, on page forty-six, there's just a line for the overtime pay, no line for social security.
That's all incorporated into the rate that we charge.
Okay, oh, so it's all in that single line?
So we, so we, our overtime rate, it's, it's seventy-nine, fifty an hour, and in that rate incorporates social security, pension costs.
All on that one, okay. Okay, that's helpful then, okay.
What makes it confusing, they don't reconcile all this, uh, overtime for those specialized units and specialized services until the end of the budget year.
No, and it's helpful just because we're used to seeing the, um, this, like we spoke about when the mayor was here, the salaries, the wages, and the social security at the bottom, but it's good to know that, um, it's sometimes they're combined into one, so that's, that's helpful, appreciate it, thanks.
I do think last year, because last year this came up too, and I, I just, I think it dawned on me this year, I think, I believe it's getting confused with the ambulance service, um, because they're on duty and those are personnel that can respond to a fire. Our officers are coming off duty, and just to work that overtime detail, I know they're, they're going home.
And you said, it was seven? I'm sorry, I'm just writing down the number you said again, how many per, was it at the school?
So I believe in our contract, it's a minimum of three, with a, with ideally a number of five at Proctor. And then there's a minimum of one, but they want two at both JFK and Donovan. We had that arranged just in case something came up where we couldn't staff one day. We wanted to commit it to, say, five, and we couldn't get five people to work.
Yeah, but it makes sense if they're even.
Yeah, and, so, yeah, we have, so it's not just, it's not just the school district. We have a contract with Wynn, Osmo, Munson, um, all the, all the games, all the events that take place at the.
And to that point, since we have all these contracts, I think that's why I'm shocked to only see the line say six hundred thousand, because it sounds like both of those numbers need to match exactly what it'll end up coming in at.
It should be, the biggest one, obviously, is the school district, right?
I think it's like a hundred.
Three hundred eighty-two thousand dollars.
I thought it was a, it's supposed to be like a hundred thousand a month, is what we were expecting. Yeah, sorry, I take back over.
I think that's a well over six hundred thousand, I think.
Is that much?
Yeah, six hundred thousand, I believe.
So six hundred K a month? Yeah, I don't want to commit to.
Still a school year.
Sixty, got you, thank you.
That's, that's filled out monthly. So it's, we, we lag about thirty days behind.
Are any of your officers allowed to, like, work off-duty without going through the police department?
No, any off, any off-duty employment has to be approved by me. The reason is, I got to make sure it's not something that's going to be about that, that might involve liability for the city. So a lot of these, these, um, these overtime jobs that we, we just talked about, they're in full uniform and they're also being supervised, so, uh, and the reason for that is that we can moderate, you know, what they're doing, but they're also covered not only for injury off, uh, while they're off-duty, but also the whole mechanical, you know, through our.
So, so none of them are allowed to go out and make money on their own in uniform without going through the police department? But let me ask you a question now, Rome and Herkimer and New Hartford, are they allowed to do that?
I'm not sure.
Because that's an advantage. That would draw more people to your department if they're able to do that.
I, I know New Hartford, um, they, they do that. However, that being said, they're, 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 they're working for the department, but they're actually getting a lesser rate than we would.
But they're getting paid from the company themselves, not going through the police department.
They're getting paid directly, Frank, but, but they're, so say, for example, New Hartford, they staff two officers at, at a basketball game. I know they get a hundred and sixty dollars for that basketball game. If they, our officers working for us actually get the overtime rate, which we.
But that has to go through you.
But it, it goes towards our pension, it goes towards, you know, it's.
Yeah, it's an advantage in a way, but, I mean.
It really is, I, I, I'm not, the way we do it, I believe.
I know in bigger cities, they're allowed to do as much as they want overtime, and they make a lot of money that way, and it attracts them to stay in the police department, it attracts more policemen there, you know.
We, we have more, Chief can speak to that.
Based on the overtime that we have available to us, there's no shortage of overtime opportunities for these officers that they want to work in. I have approved some off-duty jobs for them to work, like pressure washing, if someone has a pressure washing business. As long as it doesn't involve any type of, uh, job where they're representing the police department, you can bring liability to the city.
Okay.
Then I'll approve something like that, for example, but, uh, if they're going to work and acting in the capacity of a police officer, I'm going to want to make sure they're in full uniform with all their equipment and that I can hold them accountable, you know, while they're working. Because the worst situation I could have is they're working for a private entity and they don't have their equipment. If something serious happens and they act as a police officer, I, I think there would be liability for most of the department and, and, you know, and that.
Even though they don't care.
Frank, we, we really do offer more overtime than that, we, I've never experienced a micro.
Yeah.
If an officer wants to work, he, he can work as much as, he or she can work as much.
Well, with the schools and everything, sure, yeah.
Pink up probably for the shortened salary though, right?
Well, here's the problem, when they're in the academy, they can't work any overtime.
Right.
And that, and same thing with, when they're in probation, because, uh, they need to learn the job first and foremost.
I think the chief said, and he made a point since before too, when, when young people are looking at where they want to work, they don't think about that stuff, they look at the starting salary.
Absolutely, yeah, there's no question about that, there.
They don't, they're not.
This question I asked you had nothing to do with salary.
No.
I, I was just interested, like, say, I, I own the big bar and I wanted two officers outside my bar, would I be able to hire them on my own? And the answer is no, that's all I want.
The reason is the state, but their, um, but their authority would now allow officers to work in a bar.
Not inside, outside.
Outside.
They can, they're not allowed to go into the building.
Right.
But, I mean, if there's a lot of money inside, you know, but you answered my question, no problem. I was just curious.
I'll be quick. Um, yeah, as I work.
I'll be quick. Yeah, I was at work last weekend, looked out the window and saw a heavy police presence. When something like that happens, when they have something big going on like that, when they're having a big trial or something, who requests the different police departments to work the streets on that? Because I saw a lot of Utica police out there. And were they police uniform division?
So they're requesting the United County Sheriff's Department to help them out.
Oh.
One of the things we find with any police agency, whether it be New Hartford, Sheriff's Department, even Rome, and it's highly encouraged, as being a credit police department, is that you have mutual aid agreements with all those local entities. Because there may be resources that any one of us can utilize at any time to help with that. So we, just for example, with the Sheriff's Department, we have a joint SWAT team, we have a joint mobile force field unit, we have a mobile, we also have a joint scuba diver team, and I think we have some other units I can't think of offhand right now.
Drug units work together.
Drug units work together, but...
Or wards.
Our wards division work together. But it's actually very mutual for those agencies to work together. I will tell you this much, a lot of times, we become the go-to person because we have the largest agency and we have the most experience when it comes to dealing with these larger events.
Yes, I'm all out there. I went out there and spoke to a couple of them, so. There was no overtime involved in that, right?
There would be, yeah.
There would be, yeah.
There would be.
And the county wouldn't make it up to you in any type of way?
No, I guess we get it back is that the large majority of SWAT operations are in the city Utica. And they don't charge us overtime. Neither New Hartford or the Sheriff's Department do not charge overtime when they do, you know, details with us as well.
Okay.
So it can be mutual beneficial to both of us.
Good. All right, thanks.
Just a couple of things. So getting back to the schools, we signed that contract. Is that contract working out better than what we were doing before?
You know, we saw that the minimum of three was not going to cut it in Utica School District. They asked for five, you know, they'd been regularly asking for five.
Because originally, they...
And when it went through a spree of violence in the school, we had to actually bump that number up to eight for several weeks until the school, Christmas break. But we're working with the superintendent going forward and we hope that through our programs, that we work with the school district so that we don't have to uncover overtime and, you know, kind of get these kids under control and find other things to do.
What we had in place before, Joe, the staffing before, we didn't have, because they were employees in the school district,
Right.
we didn't have control over them. So we couldn't ensure staffing, we couldn't ensure supervision, we couldn't ensure that things were being done properly. So the way that we're doing it now is, it's all supervised.
So you're more comfortable with the way you're doing it now? Do you think it's a better system?
I am, because, you know, there were a lot, it was a really messed up system that was put in place in the early two thousands. They were allowed to wear the police uniform, but they weren't properly equipped with all the equipment. God forbid something had happened. They were employees in the school, and not the Utica Police Department, which was kind of strange because in any event, they act in the capacity of a police officer, guess what? They're still our responsibility. I mean, we'd be liable for their actions. So this way, if they get hurt on the job, it's already, you know, covered by the two oh seven C issue. It's also making sure they get the pay that they wanted. And to the point that the councilman dropped earlier, that was an example where they could go out and make some extra money. We saw that less and less officers were willing to take a school job mainly because it paid a lot less than the overtime they were getting for their jobs.
My question was more for something that, say, a bar is doing very, very well, and they want to hire themselves, have two officers outside.
Yeah.
They can't do that through you. You won't do that. And they can't do it on their own. That was the only question there. I mean, if you've got a restaurant that's bringing in tons of money and you want protection outside your building, that was the question I was for.
So my other...
Thank you.
Frank, I can give you an example of that, is that... We had a parole officer that was bouncing at Denny's and he was going to stop somebody. He got bounced on his shoulder, dislocated his shoulder, and he was out for like six months, but he wasn't covered by parole. And parole was really bad, then he got hurt.
And we just had an officer period with him and we did away with that job.
Yeah, because then your guys get hurt and then you're stuck.
So just two other questions.
Sorry, Joe.
Oh, you're fine. So when you guys get certain calls, like for example, on Saturday afternoon, I got calls from, I was at a wedding, I got calls from five people, what's going on? Eight cars went down Herkimer Road. I text you and Hope responded to me. It was a domestic on Dever, Dever Drive, okay? On Dever Drive is Park Edge. When you guys hear something there, is that why you send way more people because of the mass complex? Or is it just, would that be the same, would that amount of cars came if it was on Rails Drive?
I guess it all depends on what type of information went into that call. So maybe if a weapon was mentioned and called the nine one one center, that would require a priority one call. And I'm assuming if that many cars went, it's probably because our crime prevention unit, which basically is responsible, buying a hospital, which is for gun offenders and deal with gun offenders, like they're you, they showed up with the initial responding officers.
Right, I mean, he said, he said it was nothing, it was just a domestic. So my last question is, and I'm only asking this because I don't even really understand that lot of it, but you guys talk about how you work, you multitask with the county, New Hartford, and all that stuff. Have we ever looked at doing that, like, as a whole, with police, like, the different departments working together, like consolidation? Has anybody ever looked at anything like that? Or that's not even in the purview, or doesn't, probably would never happen, but I'm just kind of...
I mean, in a futuristic viewpoint, you could look at, you could have a metropolitan police department. It would incorporate New Hartford, Utica, county. It would probably be run by the county. That's where most regional police departments become.
Do some cities do that?
Some larger, it's mainly the larger cities that do that.
Right.
They incorporate all these police departments into one. But then you have precincts on top of that, and so...
Right. Okay.
It serves as cost savings.
Yeah, probably does.
I don't know, I mean, there, let's put it this way, the county has much more and more money than we do. Maybe that would, down the road, just be realistic. That could be something that could be...
But you probably, you've got different unions, you'd have a ton of different stuff.
But I'll give you an example. Yorkville Police Department, it was about five, six years ago. The Sheriff's Department tried to take over policing just for the Yorkville Police Department. Their residents shot it down in the vote.
Everybody wants to...
It enlarged up because they wanted their own entity. So it really comes down to what our citizens want, you know, in this area, I mean.
And I'm not suggesting that at all, I'm just asking the question, waiting for anybody to...
But it's, it's been done, it's been done.
Yeah, I'm just saying, when you guys talk about drug enforcement, you talk about all that stuff, it seems like you're kind of doing that already in different departments.
I would tell you this much, policing in the city of Utica is a lot different than policing in the county and New Hartford.
No doubt.
Those officers don't encounter the same issues or problems or situations that we do.
Right.
For example, state police, the few times that they partner up with us, they do details, and their first reaction, they don't pay you guys enough.
And they do, but the state police and the county sheriffs do pull, can pull people over in the city, right? They do it all the time, right?
They do it, but it's for vehicle traffic.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they have the authority to do that?
They do, because that's, you know, your jurisdictions are also the city of Utica.
No, I just don't know, I mean, well, I mean, beer and Utica, it's different than, I mean, I'm just, I mean, that's... Listen, there ain't nothing wrong with asking a question, so.
So, I mean, we can't, we can't pull someone over outside of the city, but they...
Right, but that's my whole point. Thank you. There's somebody with a brain in their head. Thanks. Yeah, because you guys are idiots. A master question. All right, Mark, you're up.
Okay, so the two oh seven Cs, you still got those police officers that have been on there for ten years?
So I'll give you an example. The state drags their feet, the state controls, drags their feet and wants to give these guys state disability retirement. I'll give you an example. We have an officer that was injured about six years ago. And he was declared disabled by his doctor, he was declared disabled by our doctor, he was declared disabled by independent medical examiner. The state even had their doctor examine and they ruled him to be disabled. The state wasn't happy with their own doctor, now they're asking for a second opinion. Give us another doctor.
So who do we go to to fix it? Now, didn't we hire...
Our state representatives.
Okay, so didn't we hire a special group?
Public safety commissioner.
No, lawyers. No, don't hear me out. It's my floor now. Jeez. Anyways, didn't we hire somebody, a group, like for forty grand, some lawyer group, to look at these two oh seven Cs and As? About five years ago?
Yeah, through the patrol, patrol law.
Yes, that's what it was. And they didn't get nothing accomplished. Is that what I'm hearing? Because it seems like, I mean, the state representatives, have they been notified on this?
So we're working, we're in there with Mary Ann Budshina, our assemblywoman, and in the past, where we have been getting some success and getting these two oh seven Cs moved along, is when we go through our state representative, officials like that, our assembly person or our state, or our local senators.
So our control doesn't have direct access to the NAPL, our control?
I don't know what their access is, but I know that when the notifications for disability retirement come in, they do go to our local office here for the notifications.
Right, and the next question, you said there's got twenty-four going into the academy this year, right?
Twenty-four.
Well, I mean, twenty-four if they pass the psychological and everything else.
That's, that's, so we started out with twenty-four kids before we did the backgrounds.
Yep.
Once we started the backgrounds and we started seeing about their criminal activity and their drug use, it's now been whittled down to now nine candidates.
Okay, so I say that, so you got...
And that's before doing psychological examinations and medical testing. I could lose more.
Yes, so say we have ten candidates going through the naval, or naval academy, that academy.
But that's not how many agencies do that, though.
No, no, what I'm saying... Yes, but you said other municipalities or other Rome, whatever, some of these police officers might go to Rome after they do the academy, but they're getting paid while they're in the academy, right?
They do. They get just a base salary.
Now, if they go to Rome, you say they go to Rome...
So we hired them before they went to get it. So when they go to get it, they're, they don't change departments.
Oh, I thought, I thought there was something, you said that some of them might go to a different place after you get it.
No, what happens when these young men and women sign up to take our examination, what they do is they cross file with other police departments. So they'll take the Sheriff's Department, they'll take the state police task, they'll also take Rome's. The hope is for them to eventually become police officers. What they do is they're bribing their chances of getting hired by applying for multiple agencies.
Typically, they just, they go in order of hire in the first. Even if they, say they want to be a youth police officer, we're finding that Rome makes the first offer, Kelly makes the first offer, they're going to want to make the first.
So we hired patrol, patrol maybe five years ago, something like that, right?
Almost five years ago, then.
I think patrol, patrol was hired much a lot longer than five years ago. I think they hadn't been in existence for the city for the last four, five years.
Before I got on, the year I got on.
Yeah, a risk assessment, that's what it was, right? So, I mean, so basically...
So I think there's, so, just so, I think there was that, right, that, I don't know how that, what that involves two oh seven Cs, but there was a period of time where we had a complicated two oh seven Cs, or we had a labor issue. We had a turn down payment thing down top of it. It was going to help us with a couple cases, but it wasn't forty thousand dollars.
No, it was a contract, we contracted.
So you're talking two of the things. There was a contract with patrol and patrol that really, that was pretty overall plan.
Emergency operations plan for the city.
They weren't meditating two oh seven Cs.
Oh, that's what we're, not what we're...
No, I think they were also asked to do some consultation on two oh seven Cs cases.
I don't know that we ever got that, though. We did have, we did have an attorney on things that we usually...
But we have an attorney now as the public safety commissioner, right?
Yes.
That can work on this as well. Now, the longest person we have on two oh seven C, how long has he been on?
He's got eighteen years, I believe.
That's that same guy when I first got on here? In two thousand fourteen? Wow.
He's been on, he's been on two oh seven for eighteen years?
No, no, he's been on, he's been on two oh seven, I want to say the last six years.
That's your oldest one?
Yes.
Okay. Let me see. I had another question. Now, I was just looking at your averages and everything else. It kind of looked pretty good on that, over the actuals and stuff.
I got to give Captain Desner and Cassandra a lot of credit. We always stay within our budget.
Yeah, no, I see the actuals, you know, and a lot of them are almost identical. And I understand things go up, you know what I mean? Every year, I mean, the city of Utica is like a household budget without the groceries. It's common sense. You know, now your contract's coming up, right? This year?
Four PBA contracts.
Expires in twenty twenty-six. This is the last one.
You got one more year. And I think the fire department's basically on the same one, right? End of this year. All right. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
We're good, thank you very much.
First of all, I think you have a problem with every police, state troopers, the qualified people applying for police jobs is way down now because of all the difficulties it is to be a policeman. And when I was asking questions before, it had nothing to do with salary because I absolutely think every policeman is underpaid. Okay.
No, Frank, I know it's really, I know, it's related to your son. In different states, they do a different thing, I know.
Well, I would just say, like, if a bar around here was petrified that he has a lot of money on hand, can he hire two policemen to protect them, to bring the money to the bank or whatever? That's not allowed. That's the...
It's twofold. The department policy is also state policy. Each state's different. Some states, especially down south, they allow the officer to work often be allowed.
I just would like to say one thing, though. Knowing that we have staffing shortages, our first and foremost goal is that when someone calls the police, that our, our first responsibility is to make sure that an officer can respond in a timely manner. Now, we have specialized units. Those specialized units exist to support uniform patrol. Uniform patrol gets the blunt of the staffing they should be. However, we're likely going to see dismantling of some of the specialized units going forward. Could be the crime prevention unit, which I'm hoping is not the case, because if you remember, when we used the American Rescue Plan monies, at that time, we had a gun violence issue in our city. That unit was put in place back in two thousand thirteen, they did their job. We saw a two-year, a two-year decrease of thirty-six percent in actually shots, confirmed shots fired calls. On top of that, people that were actually struck by gunfire from last year, that percentage went down fifty-one percent. We were recognized by our governor for having one of the, the largest decrease in gun violence. And we even beat our five-year average of fifty-two percent. So they did a great job. But again, as we face these shortages going forward, I'll have to pull from different specialized units. One of the units I don't want to...
You're going to have less and less to pick from.
Yeah. One of the units I'm trying not to take from as well is our, it's been a great success, is our co-response team for our crisis response team with a licensed clinician. The amount of mental health calls we are handling in this city is incredible. It's, it's an average usually between twelve hundred to fourteen hundred calls a day, or four, a year, I should say. We average about nine to ten mental health calls a day. And now the state is asking us to become part of a grant called the Strive Grant to provide incantation, domestic violence services for our people, which I think is, would be great. But I don't know if I'm going to have the staffing to be able to do it.
Violence at work.
Yep. Strive Grant. And that's going to be nine hundred thou, nine hundred, eighteen thousand dollars to share with multiple county partners, us being the largest.
How many social workers do we have on now? How many social workers do we have on now with the crisis?
For the crisis response team?
Yeah.
We have an evening and a day shift too.
So we kept on that evening?
Yes. And what's kind of interesting, because we do this, these statistics for the schools, we, it's the large amount of the calls that we're responding to in the schools are for mental health issues with the students. They start as early as six years of age.
Thank you. When do you have to submit the Strive Grant?
I'm sorry?
When do we have to submit for the Strive Grant?
Right now, we're in talks with the district attorney's office. Right now, we're in talks with the, with the district attorney's office, um, ourselves, probation, and the Y W C A, uh, what we possibly look at is a model similar to the Child Embassy Center, where domestic violence victims can go to a center rather than a police department, feel less intimidated, and it would be wraparound services all provided in one center for, for our citizens, um, I think that'd be a great approach if we could do it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, here you go. Alright, thank you, everybody, uh, meeting's closed.
See you tomorrow at five.